Starving requirements, and I think I'll save it for the next round. Dr. K K Kwok, Chairman. This session of the debate is about amendments. Well, the administration did listen to members as Dr. K K, uh, doctor, as Mr. Dennis Kwok put it just now. Um, the secretary has moved a number of amendments, but in my view, these amendments have to do with meeting the request of business owners and practitioners. And that is why Mr. Michael Look is moving amendments. Clause thirty-seven, for example, of his amendment involves display of information. And it is hope that practitioners such as tourist escort or tourist guides will have more protection. Let's take a look at why these amendments are necessary. Over the past three years, the T I C received complaints in relation to mainland inbound tours in twenty fifteen. Coercive shopping by tourist guides, one hundred and twenty-one, unscrupulous acts of registered shops, one hundred and forty-eight cases. Despite extensive media coverage and enforcement action up to September twenty seventeen, for such unscrupulous practices of registered shops, uh, a hundred and eight cases have been registered. I think that definitely this will break the last record of hundred and eleven cases. So why are there so many unscrupulous practices in the travel industry? I think it has to do with the way the business is conducted. Dr. K K Kwok, please focus on, this is not the second reading stage, we're at the committee stage. Chairman, I am explaining why I am considering uh, supporting Mr. Look's amendments. Well, we do have some hard lessons. When some tour escorts join the industry, uh, first of all, um, there are lots of unscrupulous practices uh, of inbound, um, tours. Many tourist guides and tour escorts do not even have basic salaries. They therefore must turn to commission, and that means bringing tourists to designated shops. Can the situation be, uh, changed through Mr. Look's amendments? It's hard to tell, because because his amendments involves imparting clear information by displaying them, uh, say on the coach and for the tour group relating to, uh, the tour or the participants of the tour group. My concern is that it may not be very effective, um, for these cunning, uh, travel agents. Well, you may have heard of, um, the negative fee, um, tours. Dr. K K Kwok, please put away your phone. Right, it's put away. Zero fee tour is already good enough. For example, uh, each tourist would be three hundred and five hundred dollars worth, and you will freeze that tourist however you like. The more they pay, the more you will receive, and that's a really distorted way of operating a genuinely good business.
In the past, our, um, tourism industry enjoyed a very good reputation, and many people were attracted to join the industry. I recall that when we graduated from university, some of our, um, friends would like to become, uh, tour, uh, escorts or tourist guides, uh, taking people, um, uh, to Korea and Japan, et cetera. Nowadays, uh, tourist guides and tour escorts are not, uh, welcomed, um, by others. And for people like Jane, um, again, they have, that has become a scandal. Now, I think, uh, if there's an employment relationship, they just write to, uh, do your job properly. But then there are many more practices, uh, both locally and also, uh, on the mainland. We have negative, uh, tour fees, zero tour groups, et cetera, or, uh, tour fees that are so low that is unimaginable. In the past, we used to learn that, um, um, the Ministry of Commerce and the China, um, National Tourism Administration have been trying to eliminate such practices. Now, recently, we are talking about tens of thousands of, uh, poor quality tour groups have come to Hong Kong. They don't have any Hong Kongers acting as, um, tour escorts or tourist guides. They don't even have a partner travel agent, uh, in Hong Kong. So, um, they all went to Tongchung. It, it has become very crowded in Tongchung, and they also bind up the, uh, daily necessities. Um, please come back to the, uh, C S A. Yes, I'm coming back to the C S A. I'm referring to Mr. Michael Look's amendment. He would like to provide better protection to the practitioners. I'm now trying to comment on the, uh, justifications. For clause thirty-nine, um, it says that a person works as a tour escort if the person is employed by a licensed travel agent and accompanies an outbound tour group on a journey for the purpose of taking care of the participants of the tour group during the journey in accordance with the directions of another person who is carrying on the business of the travel agent, whether or not that other person is a licensed travel agent. So, with the commissioning of the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge, we have seen this. They don't need a tour escort. They don't need a local travel agent to receive them. And as a result, such inbound tour groups are not reviving our travel industry. As we have said, the Hong Kong, um, Tourism Board would like to get higher quality visitors, like they spend the night here or they spend more per capita. However, with the commissioning of the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge and expected, we don't get high quality visitors. I did not say that they are poor quality visitors. I don't think, um, they're going to help our travel industry a lot. And yet, there are also some negative, uh, side effects. Now, as you know that for Tongchung residents, they are bearing the brunt, and you can tell how they have reacted and will react to such, uh, tour groups. They resent such, uh, tour groups, and it is understandable. I think in the past, Tongchung used to welcome tourists because, uh, tourists will go to the Big Buddha, tourists will, uh, take the Leng Ta bus to go to Tai O, uh, Mui Bo, Changsha. And the local residents and the visitors, um, uh, don't find problems with each other. And some visitors will go to the Disneyland. Now, we have got such low quality tour groups, and, uh, things have changed. So I'm worried that Mr. Michael Look, though you have good intentions, cannot sort of bring about any positive, uh, effects. You did try to help the practitioners in the travel industry. That can be adopted as the starting point. Of course, for each and every industry, we do have the minimum wage. But then for the travel agents, they don't give minimum wage to their employees. For the tour guys and, uh, tourist guides and the tour escorts, they don't have a basic salary. In fact, they have a negative pay. They have to get their own customers. So I think we have to do more than just displaying the information about the tour group. Yes, they can tell you that, um, they are unscrupulous. They are going to freeze the tour visitors. They don't mind stating it blatantly. On the other hand, we want to make sure that the tourist guides and the tour escorts will be given some sort of protection. Say, for example, any pays, uh, sort of safeguards. Mister Chairman, let me now turn to the causes of such a problem. Uh, Mister Yu Se Wing, he's the lawmaker representing the travel industry. For Mister Yu, he, his electorate was made up of one thousand three hundred and fifty members. Please come back to the C S As. We are now in the committee stage. Please tell us whether you are in support or you oppose the C S As. Yes, I support Mr. Look's amendments. What worries me is that despite his efforts, things are not going to change for the better. The secretary has taken on board many proposals from Mister Yu Se Wing, but it's not going to heed the words of Mister Michael Look. Mister Look is supposed to represent the trade unions, and we have got hundreds of thousands of, uh, uh, employees in the industry. Now, for the Tourism, uh, constituency, the electorate is made up of one thousand three hundred and fifty members only. So, who who will he listen to? Well, some of the, uh, voters in the constituency are also members of the election committees. So they will try to, um, be friendly with each other. What about the practitioners themselves? What about those driving the tourist coaches? What about the tour escorts, tourist guides? Um, when Mister Yu Se Wing was elected, can they expect any help from him? Of course not. So we have double standards. Now, for those that can help, um, the business of the travel agents, as Mister Dennis Kwok has said, I know that there will be an amendment regarding the requirements concerning a backup office. You don't need to, uh, bear the same liabilities. You don't need to pay the same, uh, amount of money for capital requirement. So you're going to assist the travel industry, you're going to, uh, help your travel agents, but it is not cited. This is because the electorate is made up of one thousand three hundred and fifty bosses of the travel agents. So what we get is assistance for the, uh, owners of the travel agents. In twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, there were many, uh, cases being reported, and they were all travel agents that were engaged in unscrupulous, uh, practices. Now, they can call to short, and they tell their representative in the council to seek amendments that would benefit them. For Michael Look, if you are really dedicated to help the practitioners, then please, uh, start a reform. Now, for functional constituencies, I think you have to fight for one member vote in the travel industry constituency so that we can tell whether the amendments would all be in favor of the bosses instead of the practitioners. So you need to represent those, uh, who are being exploited. Now, the system is corrupt. If we allow it to continue, despite your efforts, even though you try hard to shout aloud, to fight for the interest, I don't think you can really help the tour escorts or the tourist guides because the secretary is not going to listen to you.
But if in the future, the member representing the travel industry would represent thousands of practitioners, the tourist guides, the tour escorts, the drivers, those people who are exploited by the zero, uh, zero fee tour groups, and then, uh, then the secretary over there will listen to you. Otherwise, without reform to the, uh, decadent system, there's no, going to be no improvement. Mister Yu Se Wing, I want to make some comments on the, uh, amend, proposed amendments. On the questions of, uh, the require, uh, changing the requirement on physical presence. A travel agent must have an office of studies of, uh, requirement. In the future, licensed travel agents don't have to have a physical presence. There's no need to, uh, have an office, and, uh, as long as you have a, uh, correspondently address, that would be good enough. That, that's a, a major change in this day and age. Uh, travel agent business is now turning more and more online and don't, don't require physical, uh, presence. There are many the online travel agents which are popular among Hong Kong consumers. And, uh, different jurisdictions have to face, uh, enforcement difficulties with the emergence of online operations. Because they do not register in Hong Kong, the transactions are conducted outside Hong Kong. Under the current complaint, um, handling mechanism, there's no way you can deal with complaints. And you cannot penalize the offenders. And this is not fair to local licensed travel agents, and this is not, certainly not fair to consumers. Many companies, uh, entered in, uh, nothing taken against the offender. For example, there's no stamp on the receipt for the, uh, purchase of services. Many online travel agents have, uh, used different means to publicize their products that they market in Hong Kong. Uh, the Hong Kong people can not tell whether they are licensed travel agents in Hong Kong. So this is a new challenge for regulators. This bill, uh, would subsume, uh, online travel agents, uh, for the, for regulatory purposes. If they ma, uh, pa, market, they market their service in Hong Kong, and, uh, then they have to authorize and authorize, they have to appoint an authorized representative and get registered. They only need to provide a corresponding address. Such an amendment can reduce costs of starting a new business in the travel industry. This would offer opportunities to young people who like to do this. And this is going to be welcomed by the industry and the consumer. But that leads to another question. And that is, uh, if you are prior license, you have, uh, have a physical presence, you have to have an office. This is not going to be fair. So ultimately, the secretary has accepted this, uh, proposal from the industry. Dr. Kookakei has just said that, uh, uh, the government only accepted, uh, my suggestions representing the industry. Actually, this particular proposal was made by Mister Wu Chi Wei and some other members. So it's not true to say that the government only accepted my proposal. The government has acted, uh, in an objective manner and listened to views from different, uh, parties. Uh, this is part of the attempt to deregulate the, uh, system in that, uh, for online, uh, travel agents, they need only to provide a corresponding address. Uh, another issue is the compensation of the T I A. According to Schedule nine, uh, per, part, section one, a non-trade member would be the chairman of T I A. The Commission of Tourism would be the deputy, uh, the deputy chairman, and there would be no more than twenty-eight ordinary members. Uh, the chairman and not, um, fewer than, not less than fifteen members would be non-trade members. Not more than thirteen, uh, members will be trade members. In considering the compensation, uh, the government wants to make sure that there is a balanced compensation so that the T I A can listen to views from, uh, different sectors. And then, uh, the government would like to appoint someone with, uh, legal, accounting, the co, consumer protection, uh, experience. So the T I A can take on board the suggestions from outside the industry to, uh, improve deregulation. And now the, there will be a further improvement so that, uh, representative trade members would be members of the T I A. And not more than, not, more than three would be, uh, practitioners for in, uh, our inbound, uh, traveled in, uh, s, business. And then there will be another three members of the T I C as such, as proposed by myself. There were then seventeen hundred, uh, travel agents as members of the T I C is a representative body. Doing this would, uh, reflect more fully the, the, the views of the industry. So if there are representatives, uh, of the T I C, uh, appointed as member of the T I C, uh, the T I C can act as, uh, these members can act as a bridge of communication. And the T I C can also, uh, pub, publicize, uh, important messages to the public through the, their membership on the T I A and also on, uh, ways and means to tackle the different, uh, e, events and crisis. And I thank the government for, uh, implementing or introducing this, uh, uh, change. Not more than four, the tourism, tourist guides or tour escorts will be appointed to the T I A. This is welcomed by the industry. This will ensure that the T I A will understand more about the frontline work of, of the industry. Now, uh, the, uh, exemptions for accommodation provision will be, uh, rest, will be rechanged from fourteen days to eight, twenty-eight days. Uh, the original provision in the bill is not, is not in line with the, uh, provision in the hotel accommodation ordinance. And, uh, for the original, now it's drawn in fourteen days. So if it's, uh, more than fourteen days, uh, it's not, uh, regarded as, uh, part of, uh, travel industry, travel business, travel industry business. But the line drawn under the hotel accommodation ordinance is, uh, twenty-eight days. So the developers can, uh, arrange accommodation which for fourteen to, under twenty-eight days uh, without violating the, uh, travel industry, uh, ordinance and hotel and accommodation, uh, uh, ordinance. And so ultimately, the, the, uh, government has, uh, agree to my proposal to change the relevant threshold from fourteen days to twenty-eight days. Such views can offer by people who know the, the operation of the industry. It's not that we only take care of, uh, in the interest of, uh, the industry. As for the, uh, change to the, uh, definition of inbound tour group. And also, there will be another new definition on the mainland, uh, travel agents to the, to regulate those, uh, unscrupulous tour tools. The definition is, uh, that a group should comprise of two or more mainland tourists. If someone gets accommodation, travel services, et cetera, from, uh, mainland travel agents, then, uh, such a group, uh, was, uh, to be regarded as mainland tour group. This can be a problem, uh, under the original provision. Although we want to, uh, check against such unscrupulous, uh, tour groups, and they, there will be an offense. But there will be, there are problems which can lead to misunderstandings. If a tour group is a group with two or more visitors, but many, uh, travel agents would, uh, to offer services to a family, as for example, by providing the transport and accommodation, the regulation scope would be too wide then.
The other requirement is that the mainland authorities' approval is required for mainland inbound tour groups to, um, be allowed, and that is the Ministry of Culture and Tourism. But very often, uh, not only travel agents, but other social units, uh, schools or business units may organize tour groups to join a study tour in Hong Kong. And it is inappropriate to request for the ministry's approval. And the provision also provides, uh, another issue. If the tour group is formed comprising mostly foreign tourists with only two Chinese tourists with Chinese visas, then this will meet the definition of mainland inbound tour group, uh, involving two persons, then it is inappropriate to capture such tour groups as well. The, I, uh, counter-proposed an amendment, and ultimately, uh, the administration has decided to scrap the definition involving two persons and to clarify the definition to better meet the objective of the bill. Chairman, I've already explained my position regarding the administration's amendments. Thank you. Mister Michael Look. Thank you. I think we are having a quality debate here. It is meaningful because we'd all like to clarify the situation regarding genuine self-employed persons, false employed persons, employer, employees, their relationships, and, uh, flexibility among these relationships. So I think we're having an important discussion here. I'd like to share with colleagues that as a labor sector representative at the frontline, we deal with a large amount of labor disputes and employment relations and also cases involving genuine and false self-employment and also self, uh, freelance workers and part-time workers, whether they would be regarded as self-employed persons. In terms of self-employment, there can be different modes of operation. They can work as a freelance, and they can work part-time, or they can be their own bosses. But I think that there should be a legitimate and reasonable and appropriate definition. One must not plug the legal loophole to exploit labor rights and allow employers to shun their responsibility by, uh, making the employee a falsely self-employed person. Let me give you some examples of genuine self-employment. While I give you these examples, it doesn't mean that they cannot be employed. For some job types that have great flexibility, for example, for, um, graphic design, let's say a graphic designer may, uh, receive an order from a company, and the designer may work from home in the middle of the night or perhaps over breakfast in the morning, and perhaps, um, work, um, beside the, the waterfront, uh, in front of a laptop. And this is a form of genuine self-employment. The other job type is, for example, a writer, an author. If I finish an article, and if it's acceptable by the editor or the readers, I would receive payment for the article I've written. And I have the liberty of writing the article anywhere, even in the toilet. The other job type is, uh, insurance agent. He acts as the middleman between the, uh, insurer and the client. So it's really up to the insurance agent to decide when or where to, um, find the clients, and some insurance agents may even engage assistants to help them. And some job types may require engagement of a team of workers to help finish the work in the contract. Let's say a subcontractor may hire a team of workers to complete, uh, certain kind of work for remuneration. That's a form of genuine self-emp, employment. So in the case of a dispute, So in the case of a dispute, it amounts to not a labor dispute but a commercial dispute. Or somebody mentioned that Wu Shiwei had said, in fact, Mister Wu Shiwei mentioned a number of times the word freelance. That means um the nature of work is flexible. But sometimes, uh it is a genuine case of self-employment. At other times, the freelance worker is still an employee. Coming back to tourist guide and tour escorts, are they self-employed persons? Just now I quoted from the reference materials of the Labor Department. Basically, in terms of work arrangements, um the itineraries, the provision of clients, provision of tools and equipment as a tourist guide. One cannot just ask for a group of tourists and then decide everything on his own, uh the itinerary, uh et cetera. There must be instructions. For example, there would be meal arrangements. The tour escort wouldn't say, oh, let me just take them to either the Taihei Tong or to a hotel um for meals. That's not the case. Uh even the coach, uh the tourist coach will be booked. So clearly, it's an employment relationship. And of course, there is a concept of continuous employment that entails more labor rights that is meeting the four-one-one-eight requirement. That is for four consecutive weeks, an employee works for eighteen hours for an employer. That is so-called a permanent, permanent employment um with more entitlements such as statutory leave, holiday sick leave entitlement, et cetera. Whether or not it's continuous employment or whether he is a casual worker, odd-job worker, or um a worker having his wages calculated on a piece rate basis. For example, in the past, workers in factories would have their wages calculated in such a way. Well, it is still a form of employer-employee relationship. That means they will have the protection under the Employ- Employment Compensation Ordinance, E C O. That is in the case of injured work and also um if in if the worker is deceased, there will be a compensation um for eighty-four months, uh if the worker is below the age of forty. And also, according to the degree of injury, the employee will be given compensation. That is why for tourist guide and tour escort, I think the law should clearly stipulate that they are employees. I think in the industry at the moment, they are turning unscrupulous practices into normal practices. Perhaps employers would like to shun responsibilities and then they would resort to the false self-employment model. And that means they will not take out labor insurance. And then ultimately, they would take the case to Labor Tribunal and then to court. That means uh each side will have to spend time in court. Although at the Labor Tribunal, um no legal representative is required and the litigation costs would be much lower, it is still a waste of time and effort. So why don't we make it clear now to avoid arguments? Uh Mister Elvin Young also raised another issue. I thank you for appreciating the intention of our amendments. You told us that you're concerned whether job opportunities of the self-employed persons will be affected. We don't think so because these are false or fake self-employment. For the genuinely self-employed persons, they still have job opportunities. They won't be affected. Frankly, if we could tell a practitioner that will continue to enjoy flexibility in your work and that is um genuine employee and you have labor protection, uh et cetera. I think that the frontline practitioner would prefer to be an employee because there won't be any restriction on, say, uh commission or uh working for multiple travel agents. This is just a fallacy. I think the industry is trying to confuse us. We have time and again quoted the example of domestic helpers. They can work for different bosses, different households while maintaining an employment relationship.
So the employer-employee relationship won't take away the flexibility of the frontline practitioners. So, Evan Young, you don't need to worry. We are not going to encroach upon their freedom while they are at work. Of course, as Mister Ho Kai Ming has said, when necessary, the administration should intervene and try to rectify the unhealthy practices in the industry. Now, um false self-employment is getting worse with the jobs getting more and more casual and part-time in nature. Maybe the employers can outwit us. They are always able to abuse the loopholes and try to say that certain persons are not employees. They will always uh give you a service contract so as to make sure that you are not an employee. I think this is getting more and more widespread and this is particularly so in the travel industry. It is high time for us to address the problem. We need to protect the employees and we can also avoid unnecessary disputes. For Mister Wu Shiwei, he asked me this question, that is, um whether service contracts would be subject to the regulation of the bill. Well, I'm trying to seek a first simple amendment. If you are a tourist guide, if you are a tour escort, then you must be an employee uh of a particular travel agent and you have a employer-employee relationship. In other words, you can't resort to a service contract. You can't uh claim yourself to be a self-employed person when you work as a tour escort or tourist guide. So I just want to clarify this point for um Mister Wu Shiwei. So the loophole will be plugged. In other words, uh the tour guide, tour escorts and the tourist guides must be employed as employees. And then for any inbound uh tours, they have to get a tour escort. And they have to get an employed tour escort. That is the tour escort employed by the receiving travel agents in Hong Kong. For outbound tours, now for inbound tours, maybe we cannot sort of deal with this problem. Some of them have got tourist guides, some uh some have tour escorts, others have no tour escorts. But then we are going to amend um the meaning of work is tourist guides and meaning of work is tour escorts in clause thirty-eight and thirty-nine. So uh it will be clear in future. If a tour group makes it clear that um there is a tour escort, then the tour escort must be an employed tour escort instead of a self-employed tour escort or somebody subject to an unclear relationship. As has been pointed out, such a lack of clarity will give rise to problems. Um there will be great uncertainty. And then there is no strong link between the tour escort and the travel agent. And this affects um the labor rights. It is affects the consumers' interests. Mister Yu Si Wen also asked this question. He said that the industry has been trying hard to talk to the insurance industry to develop an insurance package. I acknowledge that Mister Yu Si Wen has been working very hard for the interest. But of course, he won't just look at the interests of the frontline practitioners. Now, it is said that insurance companies are not interested in providing the work insurance. Why can't we simply opt for um employment come employee compensation insurance? It's easier. If you can't get work insurance, then you go after employee compensation insurance. The work insurance isn't the best option. Certainly, it won't be better than the employee compensation insurance unless you're able to uh secure a better deal from the insurance uh industry. Now, the work insurance is not good enough and then the relationship isn't clear, so this is not proper. After all, we want to protect the interests of the welfare practitioners. It is right that they work um um with the registators. Now, Doctor Quoc um says that he uh agreed with me, but then he would not uh let go the chance to gain political capital. If he's so concerned about universal suffrage for the legal as well as the chief executive, then last time he should have voted differently. And then perhaps in this case, um yeah, the government will give more weight to the labor sector and then uh for the next term, we can talk more about uh universal suffrage. I hope members won't be gaining political capital on each and every occasion. I think it's important to sort out the uh relationship. I'm not saying that we don't allow flexibility at all. We, it is not true to say that we disallow freelancing. But it is a clear case of employment, then the status and the relationship should be uh made clear. Your time is up. Please stop. Mister Chairman, of course, we are in the committee stage. We should talk about the amendments. And I don't intend to have a lot of talk shop. But still, I have to give recognition to the hard work of Mister Michael Look. He's trying hard to convince colleagues. He hopes that he can win over the colleagues. I must give him credit. As to what Mister Look has said, he's trying to persuade us. In his speech, he has painted a very uh optimistic picture. He's saying that uh even if his amendments are endorsed and even if the administration is not going to withdraw the bill, I still want to point out that even if he can get what he wants, that is, all the uh tourist guides and all the tour escorts are employees. But what about those who are currently enjoying a large degree of freedom? What about the self-employed tour escorts and tourist guides? Can they be an employee of a travel agent while at the same time enjoying the same degree of freedom that they enjoy nowadays? I'm sure they can't because as an employee, you would certainly be bound by certain rules and restrictions. I don't want to have false self-employment without any genuine self-employment. I think we all agree that they are bound to be certain people who are genuine self-employed persons and their interests must be protected. I'm sure you would all agree with me. Now, in the uh rest of my time, uh I would like to talk about clause four, bracket one, bracket B. The person carries on any of the business activities, et cetera. And then it is said that um um if you provide the transport service, et cetera, then you would be uh caught by the definition and you need to take out a license, even if you are running it online. So I think it is out of good intention with more and more citizens opting for uh online reservation of air tickets and accommodation. So regulating such businesses would mean that there will be an extra layer of protection. It is not uh debatable. But yesterday, I already said that excessive control and excessive regulation of the online platforms would not be good. I have two questions to raise.
Their dormouse, their place of registration is usually a place outside Hong Kong. So how co- how far can the T I A go if there's something they need to take action about? Uh for local travel agent, uh the T I A can revoke the license. But for online travel agents, even if the license is revoked, does it mean that they cannot continue with their business of offering services to Hong Kong consumers? And if there's no license, how how, what can the T I A do? And you have to talk to the other overseas of uh authorities. It's very difficult to ask these overseas of authorities to the do the enforcement on our behalf. I hope the secretary would say something in response in his speech in the in a moment. And also, that's the requirement of the person having actively marketed uh the service, the business activities to Hong Kong. What do you mean by active promoting marketing? How many advertisements would come as active marketing? Uh no, there's no answer because there is no K N I that can be drawn. I want to point out a phenomenon that we're all familiar with. If you have a a use search engine or to search the internet for uh Japanese tour, then the next time you see some online advertisement for of Japanese tourism services. Because the internet service is provided in such a way that all the search engine operations and um uh and social media will be linked up. The internet service provider or the relevant platform provider would know what what you have searched. And then you would catch the attention of the advertisers. And you use your social media. This is the internet environment that we face today. So online travel agents would certainly extend the service to everyone over the world. So how can you make sure that their their target clientele is Hong, the the consumer in Hong Kong? How can you define this? I hope the secretary can tell us how this can be confirmed, how the line can be drawn clearly. Because if we can, only if we can draw the line, we can, would would anyone be able to tell in the future whether someone is defined as an online uh travel agent for our purpose and then if regulation can follow. At present, there are magazines and tourism websites promoting messages and services such as uh one-day service and so on and so forth. If they did, they they don't intend to promote their business in Hong Kong, but the message is just relayed by a magazine and in a suddenly they they get a lot of uh customers from Hong Kong. I don't think the the D I A can help the um the overseas travel agent um accountable. Would the magazine or those uh platforms that relate the message be held accountable? I think the secretary should explain to the public who would be held accountable accountable and for what. I know that the 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 current bill is not about uh regulating overseas travel agents. But I hope the government would pay attention to the issues they are talking about in relation to the definitions and the scope of regulation. So that in the future, we may have to move further amendments or to come up with another piece of legislation to to pop the loophole and to provide solutions to problems. I hope the secretary would in due course enlighten us on these matters. Mister Wu Shiwei, in my first speech, I talked about my concerns about the legal ambiguities related to Mister Lu Chong Hong's amendment. From what I've heard, Mister Look has not really responded to my queries fully. Well, if amendments are made to Well, if amendments are made to. Uh, cross thirty-eight and and so on, would the entire part three be um turned into? Something uh ambiguous? Because if under cross thirty-eight and cross thirty-nine, we have a. Definitions. And if it's uh mandated that there must be an employer-employee relationship between the. Tourism, the guide or tour escort vis a vis the uh travel agent. But there are the uh prohibitions in the same part, so there will be uncertainties. I appreciate that Mister Look would like to do more for uh practitioners. But we cannot ignore or we cannot uh. We must not forget that that the scope of regulation would become uncertain. If we do some, we introduce some amendments, there will be um. Consequences. Members will lie to the afford better protection and and live employees' protection. To these practitioners. But there are still the. Ambiguities if the um. The amendments are passed, and I'm not even talking about whether the secretary will withdraw the bill if the amendments are passed. There will be loopholes if the amendments are passed. We should be concerned about that. If we are, we want to promote the uh interests of uh. Tourist guy and tour escorts, then I would like the secretary to say something about uh. The, about. How we can promote their interests uh uh while as we uh. Authorize the T I A to regulate the industry. And now that the practitioners have to undergo training. In order to get their pass passes. There was no uh requirement that the tourist, tourist guides and tour escorts. Have to be employees of a travel agent. So in the future, who would get the the uh? Permits, the passes? It's become a big. Vacuum. Would the uh. Tour tourist guides and tour escorts uh. Have to be nominated by their employers before they can uh. Apply for their passes? What what if they decided to uh? Work in a different setting after getting the passes? Uh, some. People I know uh are pass holders. And they only work during the weekends and holidays when there's a higher manpower need. To the offer the. Certain services. Would uh job opportunities be taken away because of the change? So, all I can say is that while the directions are pointed out by Mister Look should warrant of. Further consideration. Uh, then, and in that, although the employment relationship is not uh permanent or full-time. Uh, the more should be done to afford the protection to these practitioners.
In other job types, casual workers also enjoy labor rights, but the overriding. Principle. Should be that we should not make any amendments which goes. Uh, against the legislative intent. If the amendment is passed, which is meant to improve labor rights, it will. Conversely, affect the legislative intent of the bill, and that is to. Uh, bring clear regulation to the different sectors of the tourism industry. We should start from here. And then improve gradually the services and the standards of the tourism sector so that we can. Um, still maintain Hong Kong's reputation or status as a uh tourism paradise. That is the original legislative intent. So if there are after effects. Undesirable after effects of certain amendments. Uh, and also affect the legislative intent of the bill, then that would not be good. So the D P will oppose the um amendment here. Mister Dennis Quoc, thank you, uh Chairman. Just now, I talked about the several amendments of the government, why we think they should be supported. Now, I ran ran out of time and I paused. Now. Within the chamber, we seem to be concentrating on the discussion of the pros and cons of Mister Michael Look's amendments. I would like to. Uh, speak on Mister Michael Look's proposed C S As. Mister Look. Amendments aim to. Delete certain provisions. Uh, as pointed out by Mister Wu Chi Wei, so and that is on uh clause thirty-eight and thirty-nine. And it deals mainly with. The fact that. Under what circumstances would tour escorts and tour guides be uh considered as uh tourist guides?
Licensed travel agent and accompanies a visitor to Hong Kong for the purpose of providing any guiding service. To the visitor in accordance with the directions of another person who is carrying on the business of the travel agent. Open bracket, whether or not that other person is a licensed travel agent, close brackets.
Mister Look would like to move an amendment to delete that part of the provision. I have studied into it, but I don't understand why Mister Look would like to. Uh, repeal that provision because I think this is a very important uh provision and it defines clearly. How a person is considered in escort, uh guide, or, uh, I mean, uh, tourist. Uh, tour guide or tour, tour escort. I've listened to Mister Look's speech for fifty minutes. And he mentioned particularly about what is the definition of employee or. An outsourced worker or independent contractor in English. He said that there is some forced employment. And this person is in fact an employee, but then there is the issue of forced unemployment. An independent contractor. Now, what I would like to say is. In law, what do we consider as an employer, employee, or independent contractor? Well. There are. Um, cases, court cases for over one hundred years, uh, setting out so those stuff, the definitions of those terms. And how the court will um deal with those cases. So I don't quite follow what Mister Look is saying. What do you, does he mean by forced employment? If you look at the court cases in Hong Kong and the U K. In the court, when it deals with whether a person is a bona fide employee. It will look at several factors, uh, in total five factors. Uh, first is control test. Second is the integration test. The third is a multiple factor uh test. Mutuality obligation tax uh test. The relationship between the two. So these are the uh several criteria. Which have been established in a number of court cases. First on control test. In uh cases, the, let me quote.
To the orders of his employer as regards how the work ought to be carried out. The employer's control over the workers is not confined to what has to be carried out, but also to which manner it has to be carried out. In the case of Walker and Crystal Palace, a football player as a skilled person was given more freedom as to how to perform his job. But yet he was under the control of his master, as he was under the direction of the football club and direction of his captain all the times. Also, he, his method of play, discipline, and training were all controlled under his master. Hence, he was an employee. And there were some weaknesses in this test as it had become less effective because in a modern industrial setup, there were several specialists who monopolizes. A particular skill and the degree of control he has become loose. The degree of control on employee has become lessened. And the test has found to be uh somewhat unsuitable in modern times.
Well, using the uh tour escorts and tour guides as as an example, I think the control test is still applies. Because for a tour guide, if he, um, well, he may. Decide on which tourist spots to visit, which restaurants to patronize. Maybe on that day, he will uh pick the tourist spots, how long they will stay there, whether they should go to the peak, et cetera. He has his own autonomy to make decisions, but ultimately, the company will be in control. Of how he conducts himself as a tour escort or guide. So unless Mister Michael Look tells me that this is not the case, the uh tour guide will make. All the decision, the company will not be controlling how he conducts his work. Well, if that is really the case, then I would be uh. Willing to hear what Mister Look has to uh say about this in detail. But to my understanding, the tour guide. Has to follow the instructions of the company. He is not in total control uh of what is to be done. And the company has certain control and requirements over him, and he has to be um following the company's instructions. In his work. So as far as the control test is concerned, I don't see how there it can be forced employment. I think the court cases have uh been very clear about this point. The other test is the integration test.
Station test, I quote, where it refers to employees being a central group of the organization. The question is, how far is the employee integrated into the employer's business? If the employee is integrated full into the employer's business, then he is an employee or is under the contract of service. It is clear that an independent contractor do not become part of the employer's business. Lord Denning, in the case of Jordan versus McDonald, suggested that an individual is an employee if his work is an integral part of business. Even though the employee has no direct control of his employee.
Now, how this test will apply to the tourism industry uh as to define whether this person is. An employee or independent contractor. Now, from what I've heard. Um, from the sector so far, when we talk about a tour guide or tour escort. He is definitely part of the uh travel agent. We cannot say that he. Is not an integral element or part of this enterprise or company. Mister Porter. Talked about a law firm. Uh, normally, they don't uh hire employer um. A barrister and in whenever they uh have ta- taken on a case, they will then hire the uh barrister. That will not be the case in the tourism industry. I think the way that things are handled is very different. Some uh, someone from the tourist sector said that if a travel or a tour escort or die has. A guide has to do his work, he must first uh follow the company's instructions. He cannot do whatever he likes. And then he must be an integral part of the company. Now, on this particular issue. We must, we are inclined to say that the tour escort or guide is apparently an integral part of the company. And it's, there shouldn't be any forced employment. So I would like to hear further from Mister Michael Look as to what other um points he has to make on this. And the third test. Is a multi. Uh, factor test. Uh, his work time, whether it is been determined, predetermined, and whether he works from nine to five or what. And then his workplace, whether um he's required to work in a certain place, and then. And the skills that he has to deploy. And his work model. Whether it is um set by the company as a escort or guide. Uh, what kind of services he should perform or provide. So this is a a factor. And of course, there is a question also the salary and the terms of the contract. And now work time, work hours. As a a tour escort, of course, I will be O T, but I believe that the working hours are preset. Say from uh seven A M, he should go to the hotel to take care of the um, the tour uh tourists, and then he should take them to a shop. Uh, to Tongchung, and then he should say end the day at six P M after. Uh, the passenger, the tourists have been taken back to the bus or what. So I believe that the work hours are set. Now, Mister Look knows more about this industry than myself, so he can tell me whether these, there are fixed working hours. So that's number one. Number two, the workplace, as a tour escort or guide, obviously, he doesn't, he will not go to work in a fixed location. Say if there are tour groups, of course, he will go everywhere, um, all around Hong Kong, but that doesn't mean that he doesn't have a fixed workplace. He, his workplace uh should be, say, um. Designed or set by the, his employer, the company, say, um, uh, uh, the, where the bus is parked, et cetera. So there are clear instructions on the workplace and it is well defined. So Mister Look, um. Asked for a repeal of the provision. He said that. That he would like to uh repeal the provision relating to the information displayed on the tour coach. I don't understand the rationale for this because for tourists. And. Um, for a responsible travel agent, this is something that should be done. Now, as to where he should work. I think the um, uh. It should be, um, it should have been set out very clearly too. Now, as a tour escort and as tour guide, uh, what kind of work skills he should possess, how should he should. Um, carry out his work, there should be requirements, right? And he should not be allowed to do whatever he likes. There should be very clear requirements. Now, as for his salary, his uh employment contract, I believe that the terms are set very clearly too. So there is no question of forced employment as well. Now, let's take a look at the last. Test. Mutuality of obligation test.
Lawyer and employee are under obligation. For example, the employee is under an obligation to perform work. And the employer is under obligation to provide work. There cannot be a contract of employment if there's no mutual obligations.
So this is very clear. The employer's uh role is to provide work to the employee and the employee must. Uh, work on the task assigned to him. So there is a mutual relationship between the two and there are also mutual uh obligations as well.
The principle. Applies to the travel industry. Uh, the travel agent finds a tour guide or escort and. Uh, he is required to work and he cannot choose uh whether he wants to work or not. So the employer-employee relationship is clearly displayed. And this shows that uh the. And this shows that uh the mode uh of operation in this industry is um actually an employer-employee relationship. Would there be uh circumstances when uh the two are not employers and employees respectively and the latter is a contractor? Now, if we look at the principles I quoted, it can be clearly shown that in this industry. Uh the uh clauses and namely uh clause thirty eight and thirty nine. Uh which Mr. Michael Look intends to intend uh to delete, I see no reason why they should be deleted. Using the principles I just um quoted. In fact. Uh the all the principles apply and the provisions are uh very relevant. And I fail to understand why Mr. Look wants to delete the two clauses, though I'm uh waiting to be enlightened by him. And I like to comment on uh the amendments by the CSA, by the administration, yes, but I don't have time now. I will do so in uh my second round, thank you. Mister Shu Kaffei, thank you. Um uh we'll talk about amendments to the Travel Industry Bill. And uh the um principal ordinance uh is to set up a TIA to uh regulate. Travel agents and uh tour guides and escorts to enhance the quality of service. Well, as I said, uh there must be reasons for the administration's legislative decision. And I think the main reason is uh because of what we seen uh in the media. Uh there were a zero fare tours and or very low fare tours. And uh tour guides or escorts coerced customers to um shop using rather abusive language. And this tarnished the image of Hong Kong's tourism industry. So the government would like to set up uh the TIA and the Liberal Party supports the move. Our honorary chairman, Mr. James Ten. Uh was on uh the was the chairman of TIC in twenty oh seven. And uh there were many such incidents. And he wanted the administration to uh regulate travel agents, tour guides and escorts. Because uh Hong Kong's image is at stake. And these frontline practitioners have a lot of impact on our image as a city of hospitality. Mr. Shu Kawa, we are at a committee stage, we're supposed to uh debate the CSA. Yeah, I'm coming back to the subjects very soon. Of course, we will support this bill. And. Uh I'll uh say this uh towards the end of my speech, alright. The chairman would like me to comment on the CSAs. Mr. Look Chong Hong would like to. Ensure that tour guides and escorts are employed by travel agencies as um. Employees in the future and they cannot be uh self-employed persons anymore. Mr. Michael Look represents labor interests and he has always fought for the interests of our employees. I respect and appreciate his move. However, if we are to force all self-employed tour guides and escorts to be employees. Uh will uh the um merits outweigh the um disadvantages. Uh let me uh comment on this. Now, for most mainland inbound uh tour groups, they are taken over by a local travel agent. And uh tour guides and escorts will be arranged for them. Now, if a travel agency has got lots of business, of course, uh escort A uh can uh receive um. Group A in the morning and then uh escort B can receive another tour in the afternoon. But there are some travel agents that are that do not have uh as much as much business and they. May not be able to afford. Um and as uh a long-term uh travel escort, a tour escort or tour guide. And this may add to its operating costs and as a result, uh the uh cost will be higher, the fares will be higher. And he may not be that competitive. Only large travel agents will be able to uh be viable. For SMEs that employs, that only employ one or two uh employees, they may uh be forced to close down. If you want them to remain viable, you must be flexible. There are some uh travel agencies that only have uh the boss, the secretary and also a clerk. And of course, they need travel escorts and guides. And when uh they uh have a an inbound a tour group, uh they may have asked a tour guide. Or tour escort to uh take um the group to the peak and to the Golden Bahia Plaza. I think uh uh the current arrangement will uh make it more possible for SMEs to survive. And I think we will assess SMEs to uh continue to operate. If we require. Tour guides and escorts to be employees of companies, then uh the big companies will grow bigger. And uh the room for SMEs to uh be viable will uh be um tightened. So. Uh the labor unions may say that uh when a company uh is uh bigger, then it has more say when it comes to the um. Employment of uh workers. Many travel agents have approached me. And uh travel, I mean, tour guides and escorts have also asked me not to support this amendment. Uh. Tour guides and escorts don't want this arrangement because. The current uh operation is such that uh when uh tour escort has received uh tour group. Uh here will discuss with the travel agent. Of course, uh uh the uh tour group is received under the name of uh the travel agent. But then uh actually, they are business partners. And then uh the tour escort may say that, well, we've tried this restaurant and uh it's quite uh well-received among uh previous tourists. And then at the shop uh um was commanded by a previous two groups. And the uh tour guide may recommend such shops and restaurants to the operator of the travel agency. Of course, uh the latter is the final say, but the itinerary is actually uh the outcome of discussions between the two. And uh when it comes to uh the choice of shops and restaurants, uh will the travel, will the tour guide receive uh some commission? Now, if you've been to um overseas as visits now, sometimes you might be uh taken to a remote, a remote place. To uh purchase honey. Now, uh if you, if the whole group has uh bought a hundred jars of honey, perhaps uh the tour guide may be given. A couple of jar of um of a few bottles of honey. Now, if the tour guide is an employee and if it takes the tour group to a certain shop. And uh the advantages he received will be illegal because he hasn't got the prior consent of the employer. Unless he has been given consent by the employer beforehand. So if uh it is a consultation between the two is different. For uh commission uh in kind uh to uh the tour guide. Now, uh if a drumstick costs thirty dollars and if you take me to a shop that costs twenty eight dollars and if it is delicious. Then uh no one will mind if the tour guide uh gets one or two drumsticks home for his wife. So the second point is about uh time management. Professional. Tour guides. Uh are very familiar uh with uh the uh shopping uh places and they are very eloquent. And if you ask them uh to write an essay, uh that would be a big problem. My assistant, for instance, I can uh write a speech for me uh five times faster than me. So there is no reason why I should uh take over his job. So the uh professionalism of a tour guide lies uh in uh receiving uh travelers, taking them to different places. Now, if uh they are full-time employees, if there are only three days, he um uh leads a tour group. What should he do on the two remaining days? He won't want to uh do clerical jobs. He want to uh spend his fair free time going to different restaurants and shops to try out new places and experiences. And he won't want to uh stay in the office when he is not uh receiving a tour group. So many tour guides don't like this arrangement proposed by Mr. Look. And as we uh all know, uh what tour guides are earning? At most, they receive uh the SMW. I'm told that I if a tour guide is employed on a part-time basis, then he earns more. Now, if he works only uh three days a week, then uh the um um the proprietor will have to pay him a little bit more. And in order to cut costs, the um boss would rather pay that rate than to have a full-time employee. So Mr. Look, CSA may be well-intentioned. He uh wants to help the tour guides and escorts, but um his efforts may be counterproductive. As I said, people may think that doing business in Hong Kong is very difficult, but in fact, it all boils down to how much business you have. And also the cost you have uh to uh pay. So uh if the balance is positive, you make a profit. If it is a negative uh figure, then you have to close down. So in Hong Kong, the major costs are rent and wages. And for a travel agency, uh the um. A staff will mainly be travel uh tour escorts and guides. And if there are people uh kicking uh the suitcases of travelers, uh the tourists may not want to come. So um if you ask a tour guide to uh engage in typing job in office, that's not their expertise. And that's why uh there is a lot of outsourcing in the industry. I appreciate Mr. Look is very hardworking and uh he always fights for the interests of employees. But this time I have reservation because. You. Would not just talk about the travel industry. If we change the uh mode of operation this time, then other sectors may come to Mr. Look to seek help. It's just like uh private tutors. Now, if uh they provide tuition one-on-one, uh they may uh charge two hundred dollars per hour. And um uh you you may say that, well, if they are not full-time employees, they do not have insurance coverage. What if a private tutor uh sustains an injury, he will not receive any compensation? And uh you may say that, well, we should uh require all private tutors and um uh and piano teachers to be full-time employees.
What's worse is that if there is legislation and if one cannot find a tutorial school to employ oneself. Then the person will become unemployed. And that is just the same for tour guides and tour escorts. If they can't find a travel agent to employ them, then they will become unemployed. Are they supposed to just change their jobs? I come here to speak on the amendment to ask you to think twice. Mr. Look said that he was very concerned that um perhaps there will be implications on insurance. Because currently, they are not covered by employment, employees' compensation insurance. Some operators. Have spoken to you, I believe, they are willing. To provide support to this group of people to help them. If. The administration's amendments are endorsed and not the not Mr. Look's amendment. Then uh these operators will do something to help protect the self-employed staff. Well, you need to take into consideration whether your your proposal is viable. Uh against the context of uh operating environment, I will oppose to that amendment, Mr. Michael Look. I thank Mr. Dennis Quoc very much. He is from the legal sector, of course, he's very good at explaining legal terms. I have cited data from the Labor Department to illustrate my point. There are five tests to decide whether one is an employee or not. I believe that Mr. Quoc is a professional in his field. Perhaps he doesn't understand why there would be bogus self-employment. And there are lots of cases and five tests, say, for example, control. Then why would there be disputes? Why would there be a gray area? Because first of all, employees themselves don't know. Uh perhaps we will have to promote further the definition of employees in the labor sector. We need the the help of the Labor Department as well. A lot of people don't know uh the definition of an employee. They just give you a service contract and your and the employer said that, well, you are not an employee. As soon as you give them that contract, uh the employees will think, well, um that is the norm, I have no choice. This is the wrong way, but it has become the norm. There are lots of cases when employers don't pay severance pay when the business closed down. That is the same, employees don't have any bargaining power. They don't know about the law as much as labor unions or professionals like Mr. Dennis Quoc. As a result, there are many instances of bogus employment when employees have been duped into um thinking that it's self-employment. There is a necessity to my amendment. Perhaps Mr. Quoc thinks that it is clear enough, there is no need to further elaborate it. He asked me a question, why I delete something? No, it's not just about a deletion. I delete and substitute. For thirty eight, thirty nine. For tour guide and tour escort, I focus on three words, employ by. Two words, employed by, a travel agent, employed by. Mr. Shu Kaffei. Might have been mixed up. I know that he endeavors to strike a balance between the the employers and the employees' interests. But sometimes, yes, he's mixed up with some concept. He asked how small companies. Are to do and well, they said, he said that they can't. Are to do, and well, they said, he said that they can't afford to employ. A permanent staff, but you can just pay them by jobs or by week. It's just that you will have to admit that that person is employed by you. And. Sometimes tour guides and tour escorts will make suggestions about an itinerary, of course. Bosses may. Receive different suggestions, sometimes our assistants will suggest uh different suppliers. That's not a problem, commissions, as you said. That with the consent of employers, you can receive commissions. Say for example, when you take uh tour groups to legitimate places. Then you receive a reasonable commission. That is a normal income for a tour escort. So they won't affect on commissions, flexibility. And um their ability to make suggestions. I must emphasize that. Employment relations, relationship will not have any impact on actual operation. It only reduces unnecessary disputes. You think that labor unions love to go to the Labor Department. Uh to fight for employees, perhaps Mister Quoc doesn't really know. It's very cumbersome to go to the Labor Department. You have to fill in forms, then you have to attend a a conciliation meetings. You don't know whether the employer will turn up or not, then you go to Labor Tribunal, you have to have the case fixed. And then they will be mentioned, and very often the adjudicator will ask you to settle. Sometimes the party don't want um the trouble and would incite us a settlement. Sometimes a case will last for as long as one year, it's no fun. We don't want arguments, it hurts feelings. And in order to avoid that, make everything clear, admit that those who are working for you are your employer, employees. That's why I made the amendment. Mister Shu Kaffai expressed concerns about um possible unemployment of uh tour escorts. No, they are not private tutors. Private tutors will fine a student and then charge the student directly. But when it comes to carrying on a travel agent's business, you have to have a license and subject to regulation. So tour guides and tour escorts. Well, whatever you call it, bogus um a self-employment or um cooperation, you still work for. A travel agent, so you need to give it a proper title. He has gone through the five tests, why can't it be made clear? Is it difficult or too much to ask to just have a proper title when you're employed? Let me uh hazard a metaphor, say, a man and a woman. They live like husband and wife. Wants wants to get married. To give a name to a relationship, the other things otherwise. The other things that there will be more flexibility in our word is because the other side doesn't want commitment. Why is it so difficult to give a proper title? There may be a need in other trades and businesses as well. Why do you to condone such a malpractice? The administration is aware of that, and they threaten us, saying that if my amendment is passed, and then there. Then they may withdraw the whole thing. I know that there is um a small difference between my amendment and yours, otherwise you would have accepted mine. But we're talking about um this bill, as as thick as a phone book. I'm trying to, I've changed three lines, and you threaten that um you would withdraw it. But I'm not, my amendment won't destroy or damage anything. There won't be repercussions such as uh a broken relationship between employers and employees. Why do you, why did you threaten me? You said that, well, you said I was causing trouble. And you said that, well, if my amendment is endorsed, then the insurance will be abandoned as well. As I told you, the insurance is uh. Something that. Is there but doesn't do much. Well, if uh my amendment is passed. There is no reason for you to withdraw the proposal on insurance, although it is not something. Valuable, you should not blame labor unions, that is very unreasonable and unfair. If you see us as partners, you should not have said something like that. I know that the secretary on the secretary and the commissioner have put in an effort. I recognize their efforts, but we expect employees to be protected. And when that is not given, we would, we fought for it, yet you threaten us. That is not a partner would do, of course, it's perfectly uh legitimate for the. Administration to withdraw it, but it shows no respect to the legal. And um to a two-way dialogue. I ask the secretary not to say something like that. We look forward to a continuous uh cooperation, co- um relationship. That's all I want to say for now. I hope members will support my three amendments, Doctor Fernando Jum.
Chairman, I speak in support of Mister Michael Look's amendment. I heard what Mister Look said. First of all, the administration has been oppressive. They said that if Mister Look's amendments are passed, they would withdraw the entire bill. That is a coercion. And it has happened a number of times to the legal. Previously, I have proposed amendments and they're met with the same fate. Say for example, uh in relation to uh restoration or reinstatement of uh employment. Under the employment ordinance, however, at that time, the F T U did not support me. When it came to voting, they left the chamber. This time I would not leave the chamber, I would support the F T U's amendment. I think that is the difference between the Labor Party and the F T U. We only consider the principles and the matter, unlike them. The most controversial point in this matter is that, according to Mister Michael Look. Tour escort and tour guides should be employees and should be protected as such. They are not genuine self-employed people, and that reflects the uh what's happening in the trade.
Since we set the statutory minimum wage in twenty eleven, at that time, the economy. Was not that good, the tourism sector turned. The the tour escorts and tour guides who were employees into self-employed people. Mister Look said, used the analogy of a couple. And Mister Look was asking for the proper status to be granted to them. I think the status had all along been there uh until twenty eleven, in which. The whole ecology of the trade had changed. And obviously, the business risk of the sector had been passed to. People who were originally the employees, as simple as that, the Labor Department said that. In relation to employees and self-employed people, um there are three differences in the protection. Employees can, in accordance with the employment ordinance, enjoy various benefits and welfare. For example, pay, uh statutory holidays, uh severance pay, uh long-servance payment. Second, the employees during employment uh get hurt or injured. Or die during the course of work, they can get compensation. Self-employed people do not have these uh statutory protection. Third, in terms of the, under the M P F ordinance, the contribution differs between the two. The employer has the responsibility to con- make contribution, but then self-employed people make their own contributions. So in terms of the legal protection, it is very clear that employees um differ from uh self-employed people. The employer should discharge their responsibility. Now for the tour escorts and tour guides, in reality, are they employees? Or should they be considered as self-employed or independent contractor? Mister Dennis Quoc. Uh talked about several principles, I have also made reference to. Certain principles in Hong Kong and overseas. And take a look at whether these two job types should be employees or self-employed people. In the U S, they have a three major principles. First is the, in relation to the control, the degree of control of the behavior. That is to say, for these workers, in relation to their work hours, the you, the tools that they use. The content of their work, whether all these. Are designated by the employer or. Is it the case that the work should be performed under certain rules? Which are designated or drawn up by the employer. If we, you apply this principle to tour guides, and I think we have a clear picture. As pointed out by Mister Quoc, it's the employer who is in control, is not the worker who is in control. Say for example, when he should start work, what kind of work he should do, uh the the content of the work. Of course, it's the boss who makes the direction, and the um tour guides have to take the tourists to different tourist spots. Introduce the tourists to these spots and to make it a pleasant um experience for the tourists. And the tourists. Will be uh re- enjoying service as advertised in the advertisements. If it doesn't meet the requirements, then you are not performing your work duties. So all these are set by the employer. Now, as for the uh tools, well, tour guides may not need a lot of tools in his work, but basically. Or generally, maybe he needs a a flag to help him. And that flag will be um given to him by the company, the the guy would not um produce it. And maybe he would have to wear certain uniforms, display certain logos of the companies. So all these will be given to him by the boss. He will not be producing his own uniforms or um signboards. Financial control is the second principle. Say for example, whether the worker can work at the same time for different bosses. Whether he can um take on ten jobs at the same time, like what Mister Peters shows at a private tutor, a university student. Does it mean that he can only uh provide the service to one person or uh two to three persons instead? If you look at the full-time uh tour escort or tour guide. How many travel agents would they be working for? Obviously, only one. Of course, you would say that there are part-time tour escorts and guides. They may work for a number of companies, not just one. Now, um Mister Charles Mott represents the I T sector for their technical personnel. They uh they're consultant, they may uh go to work uh for different companies at the same time. Say if you are a consultant company, you try to get business, and maybe you would be working at the same time for ten or so companies. And provide the I T support service. Of course, you are a self-employed person, and you might have already set up a company yourself too. But this is not the case for the tour escorts and tour guides. They. Don't share the profit of the company. Say if the tour escort or tour guide has shares in the company. And if the company makes a profit, he will get a um dividend or bonus, and he shares the profit. Then he will not be an employee. If he is directly um related to the profit-sharing mechanism, then that's no simple employer. Employee relationship, but that's not the case now. Conversely, now the bosses are um passing on the risks downwards. To um various levels, maybe um sometimes you would, they say that they would be paying. The uh tour guides uh based on the number of people in the tour groups. Now, if there are many people in the tour group, the tour guy may have to pay first before he gets any reimbursement. So the boss will get a profit. Now, as to whether uh the tour guide can get anything. It depends on whether the tourists are willing to pay a tip to you. Or whether you will be uh getting rebate through taking the tourists to certain certain shops to um spend. So these are, the risk has been passed on to the tour guides and the tour escorts. But then, they can't share the profits of the company. So in terms of the financial uh control aspect. I don't see that, how they can be considered as self-employed people. The third principle is on the work relationship. We'll look at whether the work is a core uh operational business of the company. Say for example, if you are a cleaning worker, working in an I T company. Is he uh performing tasks which are the core business of the company, not necessarily? So that it's possible that the cleaning worker is necessarily. Um an employee of the company. But if you look at tour escorts and tour guides, are they working um on work which is a core business of the company? Apparently so, a travel agent, if it operates a uh tour groups. Um he can't run them without the tour escorts and tour guides. It's like a an I T company which employs a system engineer. While he then performs the core uh operation. But if the company says, no, he's self-employed, then that doesn't make sense, as simple as that. If we um use the U S uh principles, then it can, it is very obvious that. Um. The employer, uh the tour escorts and tour guys have a, an employee relationship with the employer. Now for the Labor Department, uh they have other factors like um the remuneration. And then also the control of the work procedures. And, and, and that is also covered by Mister Dennis Quoc. The control lies uh with the boss, not the workman. The possession of the production. Uh materials, et cetera. Um I've also covered that. I'm now talking about the Labor Department of the S A R G. Um which talks about the distinction between employees and self-employed. So it's um owned and provided by the boss. Fourth, can it help, can they um hire assistants? Can tour escorts and tour guys ca- hire assistants? I don't think they will. Say if they set up a consultant company to provide service to the travel agents, of course, they can. Um hire assistants, but then the tour escorts and tour guys would not hire any assistants. Or helpers. They basically work for the boss. Fifth is the um. Responsibility shouldered for uh business risk, and that is the risks uh of making a profit or suffering. A loss. So the employees don't get a share of the profit, and well, may, maybe they share the risk of a loss. And the sixth is insurance and tax liabilities or responsibilities. So that's uh also a distinction. Uh there is a, a distinction between the employee and the self-employed and then. Traditional um structure and conventions. I said in before uh twenty eleven. This group people used to be employees, but then the ecology of the trade has changed and the bulk of them have now become. Uh self-employed. Are we talking about self, uh forced, self uh employment? Going by the principles I mentioned, obviously, they are engaged in forced self-employment. We must make amends. We must. Give them the status of an employee so that they can be uh given. Uh protection due to them. I think this is our obligation as to. Uh whether, well, some people cannot really become uh. Well, they, they don't want to become employees. Well, that's all right, all right, they can be allowed to do so because there are still pe-. There are indeed people who are doing that now. Mister Peter Shu. On Mister Look's uh um speech, I would like to respond. Mister Look. Said that if the company is not having good business. Maybe a, a, a couple of tour groups um in one week. And then you can still um employ the person as an employee while having him work for three days, that's no problem. Now let's ta- take the look from the company's perspective. Say, if there are only uh two and a half days of work uh within a week. So if the tour a- escorts and tour guides uh collaborate or partner with the company, then they can try to share. Um the income or revenue. But then, when we talk about labor laws. Uh there is a paternity leave, a maternity leave, an annual leave. There is no need for them to, in, the employer to incorporate those in their costs. So why are you asking them to do so? If they do so, the, the costs will be inflated. But then in another scenario, where um a lot of tour guides or escorts have to be. Uh hired, then that's a different scenario. Now, let's take a look from another s- other angle. Say if the. Worker works a couple of days and then he is bound by the employment contract to work only for this company.
Doctor Fernando Zhang has a, a very um. Good analysis. And then he said that uh in fact, uh the two may be sharing the profits. I think Doctor Zhang, you have. To communicate with the sector and understand their mode of operation. Now if you employ a cleaning worker, that's fine, and you can work out. Uh the wages he receives based on an hourly rate and the number of hours he works. How come so many tour guides and escorts have come out to say no to this arrangement? Because uh um what they earn is not just uh the um wages they get from the travel agent. Now, uh two, three decades ago, when we joined tour groups, when we visited Thailand. Uh there were very few people back then who spoke English there and you don't, and you didn't know Thai, so you would just follow. The uh tour guide and um the tour guide may, might keep bringing you. Bringing tour groups to a shop uh for uh sharks, fin and um. The um operator of the restaurant uh would, of course, um. Uh provide uh some uh tips or commissions uh to the tour guide. Now, even for uh participants of a tour group, we would pay. Tips to the tour guide, and that's the reason why people like to work as tour guides and escorts. Now, for the situation you quoted, uh even though uh the travel agent. Makes more money, that has got nothing to do with the travel or with the tour guide and escort. Now, not all sectors operate in the same way for tour guides and escorts. If they do a good job, they will have um more reward. And then, uh if you may say that if the tour guide is an employee, he can still. Make suggestions to his employer when it comes to the itinerary. In fact, ninety percent. Of the business. Uh uh comes from the travel agent to the tour guide and uh tour escort. Will the latter bring business to the travel agent? Yes, the answer is yes. Uh because uh the uh participants of uh the tour groups may like the service. Of um this tour guide and escort, and when they return, they will uh go to. And will ask uh the tour guide to serve him again. And there are examples where. Uh the travelers and also tour guide become good friends. Uh the uh group members may call the tour guide in the future, and they may want to come back, and so the tour guide has business. But of course, uh the tour guide is not a licensed travel agent, so he will recommend. Travel agent A or B or C to the tour guides, I'm to, to the um. Uh travelers. Now, if a travel agent A is uh. More generous to uh the tourist guide, of course, he tends to recommend clients to. Travel agent A. And if uh the um. The uh profit given to the uh tour guide is more, and if the travel agent is kinder. Or more generous to him, of course, it would tend to um recommend more clients to the travel agent. And uh will the tour guide have more say if he has recommended a lot of. Clients to the travel agent. So the bargaining power. Of an employed employee is different. Why is it that tour guides don't want to be employees? Now, for a self-employed person, he will have more teeth. In discussing with the travel agent and uh the restaurants and the shops. He choose, uh well, now if uh the operators of the restaurants and shops uh. Give him uh more rewarding kind or commission, then he will, um that will be different. Now for tutorial schools, that's different. They are different uh from a. Travel agent which has to be licensed, where there are private tutors and. Uh music teacher, piano teacher, and people who uh teach singing. Now, if we legislate to ensure that they must be employed by tutorial schools or music shops. Then the situation is different. Travel agents have to be licensed. Now. If uh not for this requirement, will you move the same amendment? To enhance employment protection for tour guides and escorts? I think this has got nothing to do with whether um the travel agent is licensed or not. Because um employees do not join a company because the company is licensed. So I think the argument doesn't hold water. Now, if the C S A is passed. Uh the um arrangement may be extended to all other sectors. And this will have a major impact on our economy, and uh this is not in line with our. Free market or free economy principles. And uh you, some members accused the uh secretary of threatening to withdraw the bill. If um the amendments are passed. Now, this bill is about regulating travel agents. Tour guides and tour escorts, hoping that we will not have um. Uh repeated incidents of what we saw in the past involving coerced shopping, tarnishing Hong Kong's image. And this is the uh objective of the bill. And out of the blue, you have added. An amendment related to labor interests. You have changed the uh. Mode of our, the way our economy operates. So, um in fact, uh members have added irrelevant. Amendments to the bill. Now, uh if we passed this amendment, people would come out. And ask for more, because the bill is meant for regulating travel agents, and now you require travel agents. To um employ all the tour guides and uh tour escorts. Then, of course, the government would withdraw it, and even I would. Uh support withdrawal of the bill. If Mister Michael Look's amendment is passed and if the whole bill is withdrawn, then I think the government. Uh this is a correct move of the government, because this is not the bill is about. Well, I will continue to speak. Mister Kenneth Lo, Madam Deputy. I'd like to comment on Mister Michael Look's amendment to clauses thirty-eight and thirty-nine. And uh that is, he has added uh the term employed by the licensed travel agent. And of course, uh Mister Look is saying that uh all, he has added. Uh just three words, but Mister Dennis Quoc has talked about uh whether two persons. Have an employment employee relationship, and whether uh people providing services. Uh in this way are self-employed persons. Oh, this has been. I mean, this issue has been with us for many, many years. I have listened to the speeches of members from the business sector and from the labor sector and also some other sectors. May, perhaps I should quote some specific examples. If an employee works for a travel agent. And uh let's say he is not a full-time staff member, he only uh works on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays. And his duties are to uh uh receive uh one day. A tour from the Hong Kong Chiang Mai Car Bridge, and he has a small desk in the office, although he doesn't use it often because. Most of the time he will be um serving tour groups, and he has no choice. He has to accept all the um tour groups assigned to him by his employer. And all tips he receives will have to be handed over to his employer. Uh perhaps uh one year after, uh the um employer may give him eighty percent. Of the uh tips he has received in total. So would you regard this employee as, I mean, would you regard this person as an employee or a self-employed person? If I adopt some basic legal analysis uh mentioned by Doctor Fernando Zhang and Mister Dennis Quoc. I see no reason why. This person is not an employee. He works on Fridays, Saturdays and Saturdays. He has a desk. And he cannot say no to uh tour groups assigned to him by his employer, although he only works for three days in a week. He is not a full-time staff member, however, he is protected by our labor legislation. And he should be covered by employment insurance, and his employer should also. Contribute to his M P F account. The employer cannot say that, well, he is an independent self-employed person, uh this. Will uh not be accepted. And uh we don't like this kind of employers. And let me quote another example, uh this tour guide. Well, he has to look after his family and he doesn't want to work full-time. So it's only in March, April and November every year that he would. Receive tour groups, or he would uh serve a tour outbound tours to Japan, uh to uh see the Sakura. Blossoms, uh cherry blossoms in uh March and April and uh the um maple leaves in November. And the travel agent doesn't care what he does. Outside these months. This tour guide is responsible for outbound tours to Japan. And he is responsible for designing the itinerary and the places they're going to visit. He doesn't uh have to receive orders from a particular travel agent. He can uh serve. Tour groups from travel agent A or travel agent B. Anyway, he likes to. Uh serve outbound tours in March, April and November. And the travel agent doesn't require him to hand over the tips he receives to them. If he does a good job, he earns more tips. If he doesn't perform well, he earns less tips. He uh may also be uh. Allowed by the travel agent to sell souvenirs. Uh I think we all have experience of um. Tour guides asking us to uh buy souvenirs while we are on coaches. And uh the profits made from the sale of souvenirs can be pocketed by the travel ag- by the tour guide. So can we? Can this tour guide or tour escort say to the Labor Department? That he is an employee instead of a self-employed person? I think the distinction is clear. For sure, we can say that he is a self-employed person. So the licensed travel agent likes to employ self-employed persons. Because of commercial considerations, because this tour guide likes to uh. Uh to serve groups, uh to see cherry blossoms and also uh maple leaves in the, in autumn. But of course, there are cases caught in the middle. And now very often, if a Labor Department cannot resolve a dispute. Then uh the Labor Tribunal may have to handle these cases.
I myself think that if it is a genuine employee, but um is, but they are told that they are self-employed people, then it's not acceptable. However, but if you add the word uh license, travel agent, then it will take the choices away from consumers as well as employees. We are in a free economy. Choices are taken away from the employee and from the travel agent owner. Of course, there should be le- sufficient legal protection against bogus self-employment. These, that's, that should be penalized. But in relation to this bill, if this is put in, this runs counter to our principle of a free economy. If you say that um for tourists, for the travel industry, everyone should be employed, then what about the insurance industry? They don't have to sit in an office the entire day. An insurance agent may sell and promote for at most uh four insurers. We need independent self-employed people because of the need for flexibility to sell different insurance products, not just from the single company, but from different companies as well. This approach does not apply to the insurance sector. Insurance agent won't prefer that. However, I think that choices should be given to employees and agents. If there are cases under which employees make a complaint that a licensed travel agent has done something contravened to the employment um ordinance. And if the employee is not self-employed, well, I'm not going to comment on uh Labor Tribunal cases. The penalty should be enhanced, but it's not, this is not the platform to discuss that. I hope that the Secretary for Labor and Welfare will consider the approach when dealing with bogus self-employment. How the cases should be speedily dealt with and possible enhancement of penalty. Regarding self-employed people, um and insurance coverage, say for example, where if they're injured, if they're injured um in the course of their work. Well, I believe that they have worked out a new insurance product to help self-employed people in the travel industry to take out insurance. The insurance will cover injuries sustained or losses sustained in the course of uh work for travel agents. The losses are from um personal property or physical injury. I don't know about details of the insurance coverage. I hope the Secretary will give me some information. I hope that the formula should be similar. Of course, the two can be comparable. That is, the um insur- the compensation under the employee's compensation ordinance, but I hope that they will be comparable. If the insurance premium can be paid by travel agents, it may only cover ea- each trip or uh the entire year. I hope there will be different choices of insurance products for employ- for these people to choose from. I would like to hear from the Secretary and from members from the insurance sector. Mister Chen Kien Po is here. I don't know if there are such products, but I would like to know. Self-employed people don't enjoy statutory um leave, rest days, uh four-fifths of salary for sick leave. Some people would think that the flexibility and the freedom is preferable. Well, we are legislators. We are not employed by the legal. We have flexibility. We can choose to speak here. We can um um meet reporters. We can do other things. Where you're not required to sit here to listen to other members. It's very clear that that this is not an employment and employer-employee relationship. And in the Committee on uh, in the Legal Commission, we have already made it very clear that members and legal is not in an employer and employment, uh employer-employee relationship. And of course, uh well, um the salary we receive is nothing to do with MPF. I fully understand Mister Look's suggestion. But I'm afraid I can't support Mister Look's amendment. Mister Doctor Fernando Zheng. I would like to expand on something. Criticisms directed at Mister Look's amendment regarding uh the addition of an employment relationship being specified in the law. This, they think, will ca- will take flexibility away. I think that the criticism itself is justified. Well, if you require an employ- uh an employment to be in place, there may be some people who would like the flexibility. Say, for example, like what Mister Kenneth Lo said, that there are people who would like to just work for a few jobs over a year, or someone would like to work for different travel agents. So do they have to be employed by the travel agent? There are concerns. It's worth um discussing this, but I would like to say this. The majority, that is, over ninety percent of tour guides and tour escorts, work in the capacity of a self-employed person. Well, according to overseas jurispr- uh principles as well as um the principles to distinguish between employed people, employees and self-employed people by the Labor's Department. I do think that majority of these tour guides and tour escorts are employees and not self-employed people. That's why I think that Mister Look's amendment should be supported. We're talking about the provision of reasonable and statutory protection. I won't elaborate on this point. For people who need to have a lot of flexibility, how do we deal with them? I'd like to say that in a lot of trades, there are a lot of um freelance, part-time, casual work. And they are treated as employees. So these are people who work on a casual basis, but they are employees and not self-employed people. Well, we have a lot of fre- freelancers, part-timers. Say, for example, in restaurants, in hotels, in the travel industry. There are many um positions in a restaurant that um are on a part-time basis. You see a lot of employment pa- on a casual basis. There are even apps showing you the information. You only need to look around and look for it, look for the job. Insurance policies already, has already, have already covered that. What about MPF? There are arrangements in place. Say, for example, some industry plans to allow an employee to work for different employers or uh to work time-limited jobs. Employees and employers will have to contribute towards uh the MPF. You can find the information in the MPF website. For the construction industry and the catering industry, there are already industry-based pla- uh schemes. So you work part-time, you change your employers anytime. You can still do so in a capacity of an employee. Mister Kenneth Lo talked about uh agent, uh talk about, talked about guides and escorts working on a part-time basis. How come they can't be employees? Yes, there may be some inconvenience. Mister Lo has cited some cases, some rare cases. Say, for example, someone who designs the entire itinerary. Everything's under the person's control. Um, the, the guy practically uh offers the whole package. If you require an a- a travel agent to enter into a contract with the uh tour guide, yes, as stated in Mister Look's amendment, yes, uh it's a contradiction. And um there is no flexibility, but does it mean that it's not allowed? As I told you, that there are tens of thousands of people who work in this way. As long as there is an agreement between the employer and the employer, employee, there is still an employment relationship with all the flexibilities. And that there is no, you don't have to meet the requirements of four eighteen, four consecutive um four weeks and eighteen hours per week.
So they don't enjoy uh labor tech- labor protection like um statutory leave days. And that's very clear in the employment ordinance. As for insurance MPF arrangements, we can uh um go by what is being done now. You said the employers will have to shoulder more. So in terms of the remuneration package, you can also factor that into. And that can be negotiated by the two sides. And if because of this amendment, uh these people will go out of job, well, I don't see that happening. So, Chairman. We want to improve the unhealthy situation right now, and we want to change the scenario whereby in the travel industry, the risk have been passed on from the employers to the tour guides and tourists and then on to the uh tourists. This kind of ecology, which um, in which we are seeing coerced shopping and so on, has to be changed. If you allow this to continue, then the pressure will still be on the consumers. The, I, I think it's a good thing to establish TIA and come up with basic principles. We must monitor them, of course, we should do so. But we have to change the ecology of the traveler industry entirely. And the risks sh- should not be passed from the bosses to the employees. The employees should uh enjoy a stable environment, a stable salary. And if they work um well, they can earn a greater salary. And then the relationship would not be so tense, and they don't have to uh force tourists to shop so that they can earn enough. I think we have ignored this point. For the ecology, for the good of the ecology of the travel industry as a whole, I believe that Mister Michael's Look's uh amendment should be supported. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, I now call upon the Honorable Lu Chong Hong and the Secretary to speak again. Then the debate will come to a close. Mister Michael Look, do you wish to speak again? Mister Look doesn't want to speak. Secretary, do you wish to speak again?
Madam Deputy, let me briefly respond to the points made by various members on my amendments and Mister Look's amendments. They asked questions about the government's stance, so I will respond to that first. Mister Oban Young and Mister Wu Chi Wei asked about the uh whether the bill covers um online traveler agents. Well, as the market changes and technology advances, travelers are using online um channels to buy travel services. So we agree, and that is raised by the Bills Committee, that our regulation should be expanded to cover uh travel agents operating outside of Hong Kong but are actively marketing in Hong Kong. And when we proposed the bill, it wasn't our intention to cover um or online travel agents um. Now, if these uh travel agents uh actively promote uh the products in Hong Kong, whether they have a detailed marketing plan, whether they are taking out advertisements uh in the local newspapers, radio, and do online marketing. We will go by those um factors to consider whether they should be brought under our regulation. And we have to produce proof. consider whether they should be brought under our regulation, and we have to produce proof. But if not, then um those have do not have to be regulated. And in my earlier speech, and as as I said, if needed, we will um co- co- collaborate with overseas authorities. And more importantly, uh for anyone uh operating uh or carrying on travel business, agent business in Hong Kong, they have to be registered or licensed. And their license number have to be displayed, whether we're talking about brick and mortar shops and online um shops whereby uh travelers um are buying their products, and the travelers will be able to uh make a distinction, and then they know that they will be protected duly. And these travel agents are regulated. So this is my response to those two members' questions. And on Mister Look's uh question, uh individual members have spoken about the government's stance towards Mister Michael Look's amendment. They criticized me because when I spoke, I said that the government stands that uh the government's um thinks the Mister Michael Look's amendments is is not necessary, not acceptable, and not desirable. And I said that if the amendment is passed, then the government might have to withdraw the bill altogether. Let me clarify, this has long been a standing stance of the government. For any bill uh which involves major issues, uh governance issue, policy implementation, if it goes against the uh legal intent, then the government have no choice but to do that. As I said earlier, also, I have also uh said clearly that we think that the amendment is not acceptable, not just because um whether it's a majority or the minority view, it's rather because if we uh endorse Mister Michael Look's amendment, then that a a legal loophole will be created. And I mentioned particularly about this. I said that in relation to Mister Michael Look's amendment, what his intent was is if anyone who is now uh carrying on travel agent business and and he's asking a tour escort and tour guys to do work, and if they are not employees of travel agents, then they don't fall under the definition of the tour escorts and tour guides under the bill. And in other words, they are not regulated. So if people um uh work as a self-employed person, then they were for outside the scope of the ordinance of the bill, and that the uh goes against the policy intent that we've discussed um in the past twelve from the months or so. So that's very clear. So whenever the government expresses its stance, don't accuse us of threatening you. I would, I I'm trying to lay out the facts, the legal points for you to see, and if members are unnecessarily worried about this, I mean, this is the fact that we are speaking about. And in real future legislation in the future, we would do the same if we uh have a face with a similar situation. Well, uh we don't differ from Mister Michael Look in our intent. But rather, whether the design, the framework is reasonable, feasible, and can reflect the operation of the trade. Many members have also spoken about Mister Michael Look's amendment. Different views have been expressed, and the government um uh agrees to those. Uh Mister Dennis Quokker, Mister Porter said legally the amendment um doesn't work, and Shil Kaffai, you uh Frankie Yek and Mister Candice Lang have spoken about the operation of the amendment. Mister Wu Chi Wei also had reservation about this as well. So on the one hand, when we say that the trade doesn't agree to mandating an employee and employee your relationship, it's not just the view of the travel industry, but over the past a few months, whether it's the government, the trade, or the trade practitioners, the tour guides and tour uh escorts, they all hold this view. Five letters have been sent to the secretariat, and we've responded to those as well. I hope that the trade uh can understand that it's not that we don't want to assist Mister Look to strive for the benefits or the rights of the trade practitioners, but then the way he's doing it may not be able to achieve the objective. And then I know that Mister Look wishes to uh protect the well-being of the practitioners in particular in case of accidents or incidents, whether insurance um can be taken out to cover them. At the middle of the year, uh when this was raised at this committee, my colleagues in the government, Mister Yu Si Wing and the um T I C representatives and trade union representatives have have discussed this. And later on, the insurance sector was pulled in for the discussion. We looked at um in the absence of a work insurance now, can we uh come up with a new product to help travel agents to offer insurance? And the way to do it is not by the way wa- uh way of a um insurance for employees, but rather the practitioners will take out the insurance themselves, which will be paid by the travel agents. This is a starting point, and the insurance sector was willing to design a special product for that. So this is a starting point, and I hope that I can address Mister Michael Look's concern, and that would be of help to the industry. Mister Yu Si Wing uh said the or the government will uh withdraw the insurance policy proposal. The government doesn't initiate this. The government is um facilitating this to be done. Mister Yu Si Wing, he's the trade representative, and he's also the vice committee chair. Uh we count on him to help promote this new product to the trade. For this new um work insurance product, whether it can really be done, uh that uh cause for efforts from all sides, we must continue um with the work. And if because of Mister Look's amendment being passed, then we'll be wasting the efforts as spent in the past few months for such a well-intentioned initiative. This is will will be most regrettable. So, uh summing up all the um views and expressed and and uh I've responded to members' uh views, I hope that the government can uh raise can the the legal can raise uh endorse the government's um proposals for C S S. The committee now votes on the secretary's first group of amendments moved early on. Before I put to you the question on the secretary's first group of amendments, I wish to remind members, if the sec- the secretary's first group of amendments is negatived, the secretary may not move a second group of amendment. I put the question to you that the first group of amendments moved by the secretary be passed. With those in favor, please raise their hands. Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by a majority of the members present. I declare the amendments passed. As the secretary's first group of the amendments, which include the deletion of Division Eight of Part Two and Clause Ninety have been passed, Division Eight of Part Two, including the heading and Clause Thirty-Two and Clause Ninety are deleted from the bill. Clauses two, four to seventeen, nineteen, thirty-six, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-seven, fifty-six, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-four, seventy, seventy-five, eighty-nine, hundred and eight, hundred fifteen, one-one-seven, one-two-oh, one-two-one, one-two-two, one-two-eight, one-three-seven, one-five-three, one-six-three, one-six-four, one-six-five, and one-six-seven, and schedules one, five, nine, ten, and eleven as amended. And I put the question to you that the clauses and schedules as amended just read out by the clock stand part of the bill. With those in favor, please raise their hands. Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by a majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. The Honorable Lo Chong Hong, you may move your amendments.
Madam Deputy, I move my amendments to amend clauses thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine as set out in the appendix to the script. I propose a question you that the amendments moved by the Honorable Lo Chong Hong be passed. I now put to you the question as stated. Would those in favor, please raise their hands? Those against, please raise her hands. I think the question is not agreed by a majority, respectively, of each of the two groups of members. That is, those returned by F Cs and those returned by G Cs through their elections who are present, I declare the amendments negatived. I now put the question to you that clauses thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine stand part of the bill. With those in favor, please raise their hands. Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. The committee now deals with the secretary's second group of amendment, that is, the new clause. New Clause Ninety-One A, disciplinary committee may give general directions. Secretary, you may move your second group of amendment to read the new clause the second time. Chairman, I move the my second group amendments to read new Clause Ninety-One A, set out in the appendix to the script the second time. I post propose the question to you uh that the new Clause Ninety-One A be read the second time. I now put a question to you as stated. Would those in favor, please raise their hands? Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. New Clause Ninety-One A, Secretary. Secretary, I move that the new Clause Ninety-One A be added to the bill. I propose the question to you that the new Clause Ninety-One A be added to the bill. And I'll put the question to you as stated. Would those in favor, please raise their hands? Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by a majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. All the proceedings on the Travel Industry Bill have been concluded in committee of the whole council. Council now resumes. Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development. President, I now report to the council that the Travel Industry Bill has been passed by committee of the whole council with amendments. I move the motion that this council adopts the report. I now propose the question to you that the motion moved by the secretary be passed. In accordance with the rules of procedure, this motion shall be voted on without amendment or debate. And I'll put a question to you as stated. With those in favor, please raise their hands. Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by a majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. Third reading. Travel Industry Bill, Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development. President, I move that the Travel Industry Bill be read the third time and due pass. I now propose the question to you that the Travel Industry Bill